Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of 28 February at 6:00 PM. Ms. Hunt, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubeck.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please join me in the pledge? All right, I have a couple of announcements, but boy, I sure need to acknowledge the fact that all council members are here in person, so it's great to see everybody here. So thanks for making the trip. My, I got a COVID, one quick COVID announcement and then a 911 announcement. Just on the COVID, the governor acting under emergency authority has moved up the mask mandate from the 21st of March to the 12th, and the city is not planning to impose any stricter guidelines than from the state on that one. On 911, new, a new and exciting service available from Skagit 911 will start tomorrow. You can now text to 911 in Skagit County. Just remember, I know this might be hard for some of my millennial kids, my own kids, call if you can, text if you can't, is, is the thing to remember. It is still preferred that individuals with emergencies call 911. Text to 911 is primarily intended for use by deaf, hard of hearing, and those with speech difficulties. Text to 911 will work when an emergency occurs where it's unsafe to place a voice call for 911, or for where location and cell coverage is spotty, however, the text might go through. So remember, if you're using the text, try to include the city, type of emergency, whether you need police, fire, or medical. Again, only use text 911 if you're unable to make a voice call. Text to 911 could impact the relay of information to emergency responders. So that, starting tomorrow from the county. Okay, announcements and committee reports. Housing Affordability Community Service Committee, looks like Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes, thank you. So we met February 24th, and we had a great presentation by Taylor Webb. She is part of Sustainable Connections and the Watcom Housing, Watcom Housing Alliance. So we were just kind of gathering information. There's, she kind of, she works on two programs. The Watcom Housing, Housing Alliance is for professional groups, nonprofits, and things such as that, and they work on framework for both city, citywide issues and statewide issues, and it was pretty interesting to listen to the kind of outreach they're doing. They do technical assistance, they do education, and things like that. Then they also have a Bellingham for everyone, which is for the general public, for community members to get involved in a kind of an educational platform for folks who are concerned about housing issues, but maybe don't know where to go or what, what's feasible. So it was a really interesting presentation. We had a lot of discussion. She, they do actually, every two months or so, quarterly housing information Zoom calls now. They have a housing week. They're very active, and, and we were just excited to listen and learn a little bit about what they're doing, and hopefully maybe adopt some of those better programs for us. So yeah, it was a really interesting thing, and that's what we talked about.
All right, thank you very much. Museum Committee. Mr. McDougal?
Sure, yeah. I don't know if my notes are as comprehensive, but we started off, it was myself and Ms. Cleland McGrath. We got, Brett showed us a pretty awesome video advertisement for museum services, and mentioned preparing report for State of the City. We also went through, they're planning to, to revert back to pre-pandemic operations, including expanded hours at the Maritime Heritage Museum. Target was March 21st. I don't know if maybe that is revised forward with the new guidelines or not. I don't know how much work is going to be required to get there, so I guess, you know, if questions come up, reach out to the museum themselves. He also showed us this cool online mural map that they're working on. It's a map of all of, all that, like, I guess Bill's historical murals and like voice recordings of him talking about various pieces, and a bunch of other historical metadata along with that. So it's, and you know, access to that data, kind of when you find the, a particular mural on the map, click on it, and that all springs up. New hire within the museum for comms and media, Adam Farnsworth, so welcome, Adam, to the team. And finally, he's interviewing candidates for Preston curator. Did I miss anything?
All right, thank you. Fiber Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Fiber Committee met and continued our discussion about how we will ultimately pay for the fiber rollout. This was in large part a continuation of a discussion we'd also had at the Council Finance Committee. There is some possibility of state legislation to expand the Public Works Trust Fund to allow for loans for fiber, and obviously, we support that. But our line of credit that we currently have, that is currently paying for the fiber rollout is due January 31st, 2024. It's fixed at 1.75%, so it's a good deal for us for the moment, but we're going to need to replace that probably with a bond or, or a more temporary interfund loan sooner than probably the Public Works Trust Fund legislation would allow for. So while we support it, we're not counting on it. We did evaluate just briefly the potential for an 18-month cost recovery for special connections. For example, on Shannon Point Road, there's 2,400 feet from the existing end of the line that we could roll out to the facility at the end of the road. But I think our recommendation as a committee was to, instead of that, to just require a facility seeking a special connection to, to pay for the connection upfront, or to sign a longer-term contract to ensure that we recover the cost. We discussed briefly the idea of delaying the Gwimus View area to avoid having to pay for that right now and pushing those costs into the future. However, there's about 30 weeks of work left with our current orders, so if we did delay Gwimus View and then pursued the EDA area, that area that is closer to downtown, we would end up idling staff if we wait. So we evaluated that, but we don't recommend that, and obviously, neither does the fiber department. We did indicate that we really wanted to make sure that future backbone installation contracts are bid out rather than piggybacked on NOAANet's procurement contract that we have been using. Staff agreed. Staff also doesn't see an alternative to that. But generally, we want to make sure we're getting the best price. And then we inquired further into what is holding up the EDA area, because we know our constituents want to make sure that that's rolled out as quickly as possible, and obviously, the city benefits from having more customers sooner. Generally, the problems there are, there are just several steps that we've got to go through. First, to demonstrate our planned areas completely within the public right-of-way. We have to do that before going out to bid. We suggested that if necessary, if there's, you know, complicated federal procurement regulations associated with that grant, do we need to hire a consultant to help us? Staff think, no, it's really not rocket science, there just are a lot of hoops and checkboxes that they need to jump through to make that happen. We inquired, why can't we purchase EDA materials, the materials for the EDA grant area in advance? We understand we wouldn't get grant reimbursement if it's not pre-authorized, but it is also just a condition of the grant that they pay for both the installation and the materials, even though we know we will have a very lengthy lead time on the purchase of the materials. And there won't be anything we can do about that. The only thing we can do is order them sooner. We can't do it and spend the grant money. So as you, as you recall, and hopefully the public recalls, we are saving millions of dollars on the total cost of the project by getting this federal grant. So it's, it's definitely worth it to facilitate that. And we recommended that they, that fiber staff substantially improve the fiber website, make sure it's mobile first, make sure that the URL for the fiber webpage is on the trucks, and that the short URL that's available out there is a .gov, so people can easily distinguish it from other, other providers. So we made some recommendations, we got some good feedback from staff, and we're hopeful that we'll continue seeing really good progress. As you see at our regular reports directly here at council, we're getting great take rates from people where the service is actually rolled out, higher than our previous, than our original expectations.
Thank you. And the other thing on the EDA that I know some of us had asked about, could you break up the EDA area? And we can't do that based on the federal grant to try to, to move that around, so again, thank you for that report. Onto Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met just before this meeting, Ms. Cleland McGrath, Mr. Walters, and I, and planning staff. And after last week's meeting, or during last week's council meeting, Mr. Walters had brought up the question of, do we have a sidewalk comprehensive plan? And we know we do not, based on the conversations we had around some proposed traffic changes. So we discussed as a committee, what's the best way to move forward with that? Because of course, all these things cost money, and how do we prioritize? And do we get a consultant, and how much can we do in-house? All those kinds of things that we talk about in committee. And we came up with, the beginning of a plan is, we ultimately would like a comprehensive plan on the idea of what we already do with waterline replacement and paving, you know, paving upgrades and replacement. So how can we do that for sidewalks and keep it affordable? So we are going to talk about that as a committee, and what we see as a way to move forward, and probably bring it to the council retreat that we're having in April, and, and bring it up there. So we think that that's a good start, and we'll, we'll go forward from there. We talked a little bit about the Anacortes Cinema, which now has its, it's on city property, as many of you know, and it, the rent was in arrears, but the lease has been paid in full up to today, so that is a stable situation there. We also talked about then, how about an event center in Anacortes? What can we do? And we spoke of working with the port in partnership and coming up with a vision and goals, and then digging into details of that. First of all, where would it go? Things like that. So there's a lot of interest there from us, obviously, and from the community, so we're, we're looking forward to, to working on that. We got a couple of updates from Planning Director Don Meesmer. On March 14th, coming to council will be the, the ordinance eliminating self, self-service storage facilities in the commercial use zone. This went to Planning Commission already. They heard, and they recommend that we move forward with the ordinance to, to eliminate that option in our commercial zone. On March 9th, the Flood Plane Management Update is going to Planning Commission, and on March 16th, the Critical Areas Ordinance Amendments are going to Planning Commission. Of course, after those, they will come here to us. We gave input as a committee on the Housing Action Plan, Public Participation Plan, step one of this that we're working on, and are submitting those comments to Makers, the consultant, so we can make sure we do the best job that we can on our public participation. The last thing we talked about tonight were the future of our parklets, which have been such a great hit downtown and been of so much benefit to our vibrancy and our economy. But what do we do in the future? What kind of policies do we look at moving forward? And the regulatory measures, and is there a fee? And, you know, the long-term effects and what that looks like. So as a committee, we also said that we would work on that. We'll, we'll brainstorm on some things that we think might be good ideas, and we will bring them to you all. That's it, thanks.
Thanks. That was a lot of really good information. I'm excited about the sidewalk plan. I know we've all heard from our constituents on, on that, and we've got our PCI, our pavement index, you know, coming up soon. Hopefully, we can do something similar to that, but I know the equipment's not the same. And on the parklets, yes, that's, appreciate the, appreciate in advance the work that's going to happen there, because yes, we need some, we need some policy there. And speaking of some policy stuff, I'm going to have, add a announcement here, and it has to do with, I know council is aware, several citizens have reached out in the last couple of days in reference to the Russian flag at our two-sister city gateway displays, and many of them demanding that we take the flag, the Russian flags down considering world events. As most of you on council know, my stance for the last eight years is while I'm a proud citizen of the United States and a retired career military officer who served globally, I believe my elected service is more valuable when I stay in my local, ideally nonpartisan municipal-focused lane, serving Anacortes. I am also in no rush to decide based, based on a decision that certainly would not result in capitulation or victory of any country involved, whether that decision might make some email writer or poster feel like they did something important. Just a few months ago, the previous mayor wrote about the 30th anniversary of our Anacortes's first sister city of Las Manamoff, Russia. I'll paraphrase in the interest of time. "Anacortes is honored to call Las Manamoff our sister city," and I mispronounced that, I'm sorry, "a partnership that has strengthened through 30 years of friendship and respect between our cities and citizens. This three-decade-long relationship is a gift to, to our communities and provides us global understanding. These lifelong friendships have provided person-to-person citizen diplomats. My sincere gratitude for 30-year anniversary. We all look forward to the next 30 years of this special relationship." I also jotted down a couple of things, definition of what a flag is, and there's a couple definitions. You can find probably a lot more definitions. "A flag is a representation of a large body of people associated with a particular territory that is sufficiently conscious of its unity." Another definition, "an aggregation of persons of the same ethnic family, often speaking the same language, or cognate languages." "I am sure there are millions of people in Russia that despise what their government is doing. Many have recently been jailed for bravely saying so in public, and they probably still love their flag, a flag that replaced the Soviet Union's hammer and sickle. While international politics are always an interesting debate, especially for me, having once served on a NATO staff, I won't preside over a model UN debate at a city council meeting on geopolitics. If our federal government, hopefully advised by our federal politicians and diplomats, want to sever all ties with Russia, we will act accordingly. If it is the desire for council to change any of the policies regarding our participation in the Sister Cities Program, including displays, I am all ears." One final point, and then I'll turn it over to our local Sister Cities President. Sister Cities are not, nor have they been, an explicit or implicit endorsement of policies, laws, or actions of the partner community. So with that, I'll have Mr. Lovrick, if you would like to come up and say a few things about our Sister City partnership.
Yeah, I got you loud and clear. I'm going to read something that actually Sister Cities International wrote back in 2014, when conflict between Ukraine and Russia really got started. This is the most recent thing that they've posted. "The Sister Cities International network includes 76 U.S., Russian, and 23 U.S., Ukrainian Sister City partnerships, with many having already celebrated 25 years of mutually beneficial exchanges and cooperative activities. These partnerships have helped build understanding and peace by creating grassroots connections between communities." And by the way, just on a side note, here in Washington, aside from Anacortes, also Bellingham and Tacoma have Russian sister cities as well. "As tensions have risen in recent weeks between the U.S., Russia, and Ukraine, Sister Cities International hopes that the citizens of all the countries keep in mind the principles of citizen diplomacy, that have made sister cities an important link between these countries for the past quarter century. One, that citizens can have a positive impact on international relations through their activities, as well as through the personal relationships they create with other citizens. Two, that peace is built through mutual respect, open communication, cooperation, and long-term engagement, one, one individual and one community at a time. And three, that continued communication is necessary because of our differences, not in spite of them. Sister Cities are not, nor have we, or have they ever been, an explicit or implicit endorsement of policies, laws, or actions of the partner community. Rather, they maintain the channels of communication even when political or cultural differences threaten to sever relationships between the communities that the citizens have spent years cultivating. The people who participate in the Sister City exchanges by the likes of students, teachers, doctors, businesspeople, artists, and other private citizens have seen firsthand how peaceful engagement and communication can help enhance their personal and professional lives, as well the lives of others in their communities. We hope that all the Sister City members, the municipal officials, and individual citizens maintain the perspective that it's better to support community ties, ties such as sister cities, as a way to constructively communicate with one another, and continue to search for a peaceful resolution to tensions throughout civic engagement." And lastly, as Sister Cities International's founder, President D. Eisenhower said, quote, "If we're going to take advantage of the assumption that all people want peace, then the problem is for people to get together and to leap governments, if necessary, to evade governments, to work out not one method, but thousands of methods by which people can gradually learn a little bit more of each other." And also, on a side note, I was just thinking on my drive here, maybe to give another perspective on what's going on. You know, with the, with the restrictions we've had, you know, due to COVID and things between us and Canada, which we have a sister city in, my son, he lives in Canada, and so due to restrictions, he hasn't been able to come to Anacortes for two years. So, you know, I may not agree with the policies of Prime Minister Trudeau, but yet I don't feel like the Canadian flag should come down. So that's kind of my stand, is that I don't have a problem with those citizens, the same way we don't have a problem with the citizens of Russia. So that's kind of our stand and, and my personal perspective on the issue. Thank you. And I think my past president, Dwayne Clark, has another.
Yeah.
Piece of, piece of information he'd like to share.
And this rolls in perfectly with our public comment, which is the next item on, on the agenda. So yeah, if any member of the public wants to comment, if you're not commenting on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, you'll have an opportunity to do that later.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share a couple of thoughts about this situation, international situation that exists, and our communities thinking about this. I think it's, it's safe for me to say that, like most Americans, and probably most citizens of this world, as we've watched what's happened in the last week in Ukraine, we are terrified, we are heartbroken, and we are inspired by how those Ukrainians have behaved. Remarkable. I think anything this community decides to do to support folks in Ukraine, and not just Ukrainians in Ukraine, but Ukrainians in Anacortes and elsewhere, I'm behind it. I support that, and I believe in that. But I think maybe there's a better way to think about the Russian flag. I want to share just a couple of sentences from a couple of recent online news articles. The first one is from the Business Insider on February 24th, so just four days ago. The title is "Massive Protest Erupt in Putin's Hometown of St. Petersburg as Russians Voice Opposition to the War in Ukraine." Now, if you don't know, St. Petersburg is only 25 miles from Lomonosov. Lomonosov is 25 miles to the west, it's on the Gulf of Finland. It has a remarkable place in Russian history, 300 years of history, and it's got some of the most remarkable cultural and architectural buildings, particularly a unique palace that's right in a park close to the city center in Lomonosov. So here's a couple of comments from this article. "Massive protest erupt on Thursday in President Vladimir Putin's hometown of St. Petersburg as people voiced their opposition." This is where it gets a little more tense. "Russian government forces have threatened to arrest anti-war protesters who took to the streets after Putin announced military action. Russia's investigative committee warns citizens in a statement not to take part in unauthorized protests associated with the tense foreign political situation. As of 10:00 PM local time in St. Petersburg, protest monitoring media group," I don't recognize the name, a bunch of letters, "reported that over 1,400 people had been detained across Russia, about 400 in St. Petersburg." This isn't like a protest in America. If you protest in Russia, you have to be aware of serious consequences. So, and then there was another article that came out today in the, on the website of Al Jazeera, and it says, "Russians Denounce Collective Punishment for Ukraine Invasion," and just two sentences. "But many Russians believe they are being unfairly punished for their leaders' actions, feeling it amounts to collective punishment." And then this sentence, which I think is the most telling about how the Russian people feel about what their leaders are doing. "While it is not yet clear how many Russians support their president's decision, a poll by independent pollster Levada, just days before the invasion, showed that only 14% of Russians blamed Ukraine for the military standoff." 14%. That means 86% did not agree. I think for us to think in terms of taking down a flag that means as much or more to Russians as our flag means to us is counterproductive. Just a couple more thoughts to bring it closer to home. One of our favorite departed friends, Wally Funk, was the first Anacortes resident to set foot in Lomonosov. He did it in 1991 as the original organization of Sister Cities was beginning to form, and he went there, I'm sorry I have to wear this mask, because I have a smile for part of this. He went there as a spy. It wasn't really as a spy. He went there to find out if Lomonosov would be a good fit for a sister city for Anacortes. He did, they knew he was coming, but he and his wife, Mary Ann, traveled across Russia, 21-day tour. They came to Lomonosov, they were welcomed like royalty. They met with city leaders, they stayed in people's homes, just as John and I have done, small homes, very small homes, but people who were willing to take us in, feed us, take care of us. It was absolutely remarkable. He was given a, a key to the city. Turns out, it was a key to the city of San Francisco, but that's a different story. So, and he came back with his report, and he did, he was touched. It affected his, the things he published for years afterwards, the number of articles that he produced about the importance of people finding this human relationship with, with others. And keep in mind, this was only, this was the same year that the Berlin Wall came down. It was stunning to be able to do that, but how much people in both countries were craving this relationship, I think that's what that tells, tells us. this relationship, I think that's what that tells us. I think the other thing I think about is a young lady who came to Anacortes in 1997 as an exchange student. She attended Anacortes High School, went back home, came back to Anacortes, married a local boy, has two children, and is a U.S. citizen, is very proud of the U.S. flag, and is very proud of the Russian flag. So, I think, I guess the bottom line point for me is, there needs to be a way where we can demonstrate our support for the citizens of Ukraine while at the same time not offending our friends and citizens in Russia. I think taking the flag down would be a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and thank you for the perspective. I think it's really hard these days to be nuanced anymore. All right, so where I am as mayor, if council wants to come up with a policy to direct me to do something or the other, I'm open to it. Obviously, we can't do that tonight because we'd have to publish that action. But any further comments from the public?
Bashi Morris, 1618 Seventh Street. I have a few comments regarding legal notices placed in the Anacortes American. You found quite a number of us in the audience last week regarding a proposal. Until today, at 3:00 in the afternoon, the public safety site suggested in that Anacortes American public announcement, legal announcement, there was no link to any information about public hearings or any of the ordinances being discussed. I emailed Mr. Ludeman at about 2:00, after I went from the engineering department where I said, "It could be me, it could be my computer, could you please bring it up and print it?" And they did, and there was no link. And about an hour later, I got an email back from Mr. Ludeman stating that he had fixed it. One of my thoughts concerning that is that this problem in updating the city website, while understandable, nonetheless disadvantaged the public from finding referring information on public hearings, and I suggest that the public hearing scheduled for next week, March the 7th, be resubmitted to the Anacortes American with the customary lead time. I would have no reason to go back and look at the traffic safety if I found no information in the last three weeks. Okay. I also wish to speak to a proposed parking restriction of no parking either side on G. Avenue between 7th and 8th Streets. There are four houses. I spoke with residents there, none were aware of this proposed ordinance. Others who live above with sightlines down the hill state that they have almost never seen a vehicle or a trailer parked there. It is a really steep hill. It's a good sledding hill and not so much favored for parking on street as there are no curbs or sidewalks. Do we need more signage and restrictions against something of rare occurrence? Okay, in regard to the proposed ordinance of restricting the Guimas Kewanas parking lot from four-hour, no overnight parking signage, two-hour parking will be posted. I also think that user groups for this lot need to be considered. Most park users arrive on foot, many kayakers use the lot, and now the one business on Guimas, the Guimas store, will be severely impacted as you cannot go for brunch, dinner, or evening music within a two-hour period. Then regarding city parking ordinances elsewhere in the city, I personally drove to these city parks and public buildings looking for restrictions on parking other than for handicap space signage, if any. No signage was located at Storvik Park, Ben Ruth Skate Park, the park on 37th that's accessed from 27th, I think it's the Playpad, Ace of Hearts Park and Dog Park located there, Volunteer Park, three sections at Smiley's Bottom, Cosland Park, the North Avenue Park at Third, and the Guimas Channel, any of the public schools, the Anacortes Senior Center in Poole, the Depot, and the Farmer's Market. Next, I wish to address the proposed ordinance extending the resident permit parking on the south side of 6th Street from H. Avenue to J. Avenue for these reasons. One, each of the properties potentially privileged have either two off-street parking spaces on their property or a curb cut in addition. Two new builds in the last 10 years have two-car garages on the alley. One new build has a garage and a carport on I. Avenue and a driveway curb cut on 6th. One new build has a double curb cut on 6th and a single-car garage on the alley. One new build has three paved spaces on the alley as well as a curb cut to two parking spaces off J. Avenue. The one remaining home built in the 20s has a new ADU building with two off-street parking places on the alley. These properties are already privileged with passes for permit parking designated on the north side of 6th as it exists. Properties on the south side of 6th Street between J. and K. Avenues are not privy to this ordinance. One property built in the 20s on a 30-foot frontage, as was common then, has no garage or curb cut. They have built up a gravel pad engineered for one parking space on the alley. Others do have off-street parking options. I suggest before this ordinance is deliberated on that Councilor Ryan's suggestion of public city-driven research, block by block, be given consideration. The idea of a comprehensive look at this very small area within several blocks east, west, and south of the Guimas Ferry needs a different approach in whole before these three upcoming ordinance proposals are deliberated, rather than a piecemeal approach. Thank you. But I would very much interested to find out what your thoughts are on the legal notice that went out about public hearings for which no one could get information. I made three trips to the engineering department to try to figure it out. And the reason you had people here was because the neighbors in our neighborhood know each other.
No, and I'll check, I'll obviously check and make sure, and we have that list from you also. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, any additional comments from the public? We are in the public comment period. Anybody online? I've got a panelist raising their hand. Whoops, maybe that was accidental. It went away right away. Okay, attendees online and in person. Okay, I will move on to the consent agenda, item five. Counsel. I know I used to be the one to do this, but now I can't anymore in this role. So, Counselor.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
I'm moved to approve items A through C on the consent agenda. Second.
Sorry about that. Okay, that was all me.
He had beat me to it.
Mr. McDougal seconded by Mr. Carter to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. On to item six, which is Other Business, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Annual Appointments, Discussion, and Possible Action. Mr. Miesmer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and the audience. RCW 67.28.1817 requires the city to establish a Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC, which must review and comment on any proposal to impose, increase, or repeal the lodging tax, or change the allocations, and on applications for allocations. And any changes to those allocations must occur at least 45 days before final action or passage of that proposal. The committee members must be appointed by the city council, and the city, established through the Tourism Promotion Strategy Plan, membership to include at least three members who represent businesses required to collect the tax, and an equal number of members who are involved in activities authorized to be funded by the tax revenue. And a city-elected official must serve as chair of the committee. And so, the city-elected official who is chair of the committee this year is Mr. Anthony Young, council member. So, with that, confirmation of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for 2022, there are four current members of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee who have confirmed that they wish to serve another year. The members are Mark Leoni and Russell Olivier, representing businesses required to collect the tax, and Eric Shaw and Andy Stewart, representing organizations that may be funded by the tax revenue. And again, council member Anthony Young is the newly-appointed chair. The committee currently has two vacancies, one in each category. Two applications were submitted, and I believe those are in your packet, that fulfill the requirements, and council confirmation is requested. The candidates under the new members are John Kim, owner of Ship Harbor Inn, and Kristi Lyman of the Anacortes Chamber of Commerce. And city staff recommend approval of the applications as they would make excellent additions to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. With that, if council has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Thank you. Yeah, as I know everybody on council knows, I was fortunate to serve as the chair of the LTAC committee for, I think, almost six years, executing an excellent plan that Mr. Walters had a hand in writing for the most part, and it's always great to have willing volunteers because it hasn't been too easy sometimes getting that right mix of folks in there. So, I appreciate the fact that they're willing to continue serving on LTAC. It gets fast and furious around the fall timeframe to get all those things going. So, anyway, okay, counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young, LTAC Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mayor Miller, well, one of the first things I want to say about the LTAC committee is I'm looking forward to serving on it, and I'm looking forward to serving as chair, I'm looking forward to working with the members to, you know, just serve our city and make a great use of the dollars that we do have coming in to encourage people to visit as well as rooms to be occupied, dollars to be spent within our city. Also, I want to say that, looking back over the last two years and the work that was done to try to, one, preserve our economy, when we suffered heavily as a result of the pandemic, COVID, uncertainty about who, what, where, when, why, how, how do we get there, people not coming downtown and feeling safe, but then the parklets came into play, and then the other ideas that sort of came along as people got more comfortable with understanding what they could do to protect their health as well as to encourage the businesses that we have to survive. With that said, you know, that commendable effort, I do think, though, that as we move forward in a new pattern of, well, first with the new mayor, but also with a new look at how we go about doing business these days. Lots of people are shopping online, lots of people are beginning to feel the claustrophobia and wanting to come out, but they're also working very hard to protect themselves. That's also why I have an N95 mask myself. I've noticed people that are still wearing theirs. But I'm saying all of that to say that as a new council with new members, as we sort of come into our own about how do we want to work with our new mayor, put forward thoughts and ideas, put forward his agenda, that we're going to, we really need to look at how we've also gone about making some appointments and do some of the reviews. I think for me, early on, you know, it was almost just a rubber stamp, you know, anybody that came forward, we know they've been vetted, we know they've gone through the process, we believe all of them to be extraordinary people, but the job of council is huge. It really is, as is the job of mayor and the job of all of the departments that we have. But one of the things that we're looking forward to now is a greater participation in that process and working together to select people. Any of the other people that, any of the people that own this committee right now has done a stellar job, and that thought isn't that not moving this forward, but the thought is, how do we review it? How do we have greater participation? And then, at the same time, you know, create new thoughts and new ideas at a table. And so, that's one of the things I wanted to say about it, and one of the things that I've heard from council, that people that have spoken to me about it, that's one of the things that I wanted to bring forward. But I do think, though, that we really need to look at all of our committees, not just LTAC. I think LTAC is just one of the committees we're dealing with tonight, but we really need to begin as council to look a little deeper if we haven't, and that's what I'm hoping we can bring forward.
Thank you. One of the things that Mr. Miesmer alluded to, I think that we're all aware of, is the fact that, well, we, like, I'll back up one step. Like Mr. Young, I'm very grateful for the people that serve so passionately and in their engaged ways on our boards and commissions. A lot of us here have been on those boards and commissions, and we appreciate their value and all the work that they do and continue to do. One of the things, though, that I agree with, with Mr. Young, is that I don't think people, I don't think that we do a really great job of letting people know these opportunities are available, and I think that we can do a better job with that. I don't know how many people know that we have a Talent Bank application on our city website and all the different boards that are available to serve on, and so I think that we need to do a better job at that. And that's not to say that the people who are serving or applying to serve are not fantastic, but we have such a great brain trust in this community, and I feel like we should have a great pipeline of people stepping forward, and that's on us. So, that's something that I want to, I want to help with where I can.
Mr. Walters.
Thank you. To get down to brass tacks a little bit, with these particular appointments, I had inquired with Mr. Miesmer a couple of weeks ago where we had authority for some of the appointments, because the statute requires an equal number of representatives from entities that are collecting the tax, the hoteliers, and entities that are eligible to receive the tax. I don't, I don't have, at this point, confirmation on 100% of the appointments here, who represents which group and exactly how they qualify to represent those groups. I'm a little uncertain about that. These are legislative appointments. The statute makes the city council responsible for the appointment. So, we really, it's really on us to figure this out. And specifically, I would not vote to approve a chamber representative on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The chamber gets more than 50% of our yearly allocation of lodging tax dollars, and back when I was the chair of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, this question came up, and we told the chamber director at that time that we didn't want to have a chamber member on the committee because the chamber was already so overrepresented. I think that in the next couple of years, we are likely to see some real demands on our lodging tax funds, especially as we talk about an event center. I don't think it's going to be possible to do an event center with city participation through lodging tax and also fund everything at the levels that we'd previously funded them at. So, it's going to become important. So, I think we ought to step back. First of all, I think we need to have some code for this committee because the statute says at least two members. We have had three. It ought to be at least three members. It ought to be at least three members from each group, collection of tax, and eligible to spend the tax. We need to figure that out, and we need to codify it. I would suggest we do that first, and then advertise, and then review, and decide who we're going to appoint. And I had spoken with Mr. Miesmer, he said that there's no particular urgency to get this done right away. We do have one pending application from AMP that we want to review, but, you know, we could spend a month working on code and structure and then circle back.
Yeah, of course, I remember the discussion on the chamber thing, but I didn't see anywhere in our policy or the RCW that restricts somebody because they get more than 51% of the, of the dollar amount, and that's why they're there. And to the, the crux of the issue is the whole, is the pipeline problem and advertising it. You know, that's kind of where we've been in the LTAC, when we're always, we, I always felt like we were short-staffed on the LTAC, because, you know, we don't have that many hoteliers. We have very busy business folks that, again, there's a few people who are willing to, to serve their time and provide that insight. So, yeah, it's tough, and we would like to get better. But also, I'd just like to ask the council to be somewhat sensitive to reward those people who did do really good work during the pandemic and served and provided good things like parklets and that kind of thing. So, you know, before you blow the whole thing up, which, again, it's your prerogative to do, I'd just ask you to keep that in mind.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to follow up on that, because I think that, you know, the points that are made about the service that's been given, the work that's been put in, the people that are nominated, willing to serve, public service is not always the easy. You know, you gotta have a heart for it and a desire to serve the public in lieu of all of the wonderful things that come with it and the great challenges that come with it. And I think that that's what we are all saying, and, but I do think, though, that one of the challenges many cities face is in, one, recruiting people, first of all, to come and volunteer. I understand that. But I do think that there are some new and other methodologies of reminding the people and the public that there are opportunities here to be done. And I think that that's some work that we could do individually in order to have a greater pool. I totally understand the thought of busy people. But there's one other thing that I really think is important that we, as good people who have spent much of their life in public service, recognize that in our city, Anacortes, we've grown tremendously by way of people migrating here to our city and choosing to make this home, bringing with them all the skills that they've acquired over a lifetime, but also wanting to find a way to be used, those skills here. And I do think that sometimes we really have to thank wonderful people for service, and also, at some points, also begin to mix and allow new people a chance to offer their thoughts and ideas to the table as well. And this is not speaking, you know, to the LTAC committee in specific, you know, or even in suggesting that it's to remove the people on LTAC that want to be reappointed. But I think that we need to also recognize that there are a lot of people who live in this city that really are looking for a way in to figure out how they can help our city be what it is, the best that it wants to be. And I think sometimes we cannot be afraid or reluctant to say, "Thank you for your service. Thank you." But we're also going to consider some other names that we may want to consider or may want to volunteer for this particular committee or not. And that's not saying appreciation in any way am I suggesting that, but I'm just simply saying that we got a lot of people, wonderful people in this town, and I believe if we give them an opportunity to want to serve, I believe we'll have more that will serve, and that's what I'm saying. So, Mr. Walters, to your point that you were making, what do you think we ought to do?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I have a question for Mr. Miesmer. So my understanding, my interpretation of it is that for the representative of an organization that receives over 50% of the funding of the LTAC that is distributed, looks like a conflict of interest to me. In the past, as I think Mr. Walters alluded to, this has come up, and was that a similar conversation at that point when the chamber director at that time had applied to be on LTAC?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Moulton. You know, I think that might have been the case, but there really, there's nothing in RCW or in the Tourism Promotion Strategic Plan that addresses, you know, something of that nature. And I guess, you know, what we're looking at is the, the Tourism Promotion Strategic Plan identifies at least three members who are representatives of businesses to collect the tax. We have three hoteliers that have volunteered, and then those members who are involved in activities authorized to fund the revenue received from the tax. We have three folks in that category as well. And, you know, in advertising, you know, yes, I think it's entirely possible that, you know, we could do a better job in advertising various committees. My past experience with this particular committee, it's been very difficult to find volunteers. We have had to reach out and contact hoteliers and other folks to, to see if they're interested in participating, and oftentimes, we get a very blank "no, I'm too busy." So I really appreciate, you know, the fact that we've had members who are willing to come back. But as, you know, as far as advertising, if the council has some direction for staff in how to advertise and get the word out, you know, I'm open to those suggestions.
Thank you. And to miss, just, I can't help but to not pretend I don't have experience chairing the LTAC committee. I'm sorry, I'm just not going to go there. But I think, for Mr. Young, I think it will be, it is very helpful to have folks that have been on there, serving for a long time. I think you'll find that extremely helpful. And again, the, the big challenge is, you know, being a business owner, and that, that's different public service. We at least get some compensation for our public service. They're only getting negative compensation from time away from their businesses. So just keep that, that little piece in mind as well.
Mayor, Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick, please.
Thank you, sir. This is a similar question for Dawn. So one of the things that's difficult about this is that you've got a small pool of people outside of the hoteliers. They have to be people involved in activities that are funded by this revenue. So currently, you've got one person that's very involved in a nonprofit around the outdoors reapplying, you've got a private business owner reapplying, and you've got someone authorized to receive tourism funds. And when we look at our neighbors up in Bellingham, they've got the head of the chamber and the head of the county tourism sitting on their board. I just, I just want to point out that this is a very small pool of people that can apply for this, much less, you know, take the time to actually do this. Mr. Miesmer, do you know if there's any flexibility in what defining a person involved in activities authorized to receive the funding? Could it be someone that volunteers at the farmer's market? Do they have to be on the board of the farmer's market? Is there a way that we can clearly define this in order to assist in the outreach of getting candidates?
Thank you, Ms. Hubick. You know, I, I think that we could more clearly define, especially that portion of the members who would be authorized to receive funding, it's not clearly identified. We know that, as you mentioned, we have one member who is fully involved with a nonprofit organization, and another who has a tourism-related business. Each are qualified to receive funding. So in the future, yes, we could, we could more clearly define that, especially in the Tourism Promotion Strategic Plan.
Mayor Miller.
Yeah. Mr. Carter.
I don't necessarily agree that turning someone down because it overrepresents the chamber, the chambers there represents all businesses. And I think that the experience that we'd be getting far outweighs the overrepresentation with the experience and the, the time of length that someone there has already put into the city, and doing advertisement for the entire city would greatly benefit the committee.
Thank you. Okay, so I think I've narrowed it down to two issues, more candidates, and whether or not the chamber should be part of, part of that. And again, going to the LTAC experience, having the chamber there, the chamber is clearly a, and I'm not making an argument, I'm just trying to provide information, the chamber is clearly our contracted for the last however many years, our contracted tourism promotion, our primary, our city's primary contractor doing that. And I know we've had debates about that before, but just wanted to point that out.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I don't think that anyone here has suggested blowing anything up. I do think that some formalization of the process, formalization, codification of what the parameters are, as Ms. Hubick was suggesting and Mr. Miesmer was confirming, we could further define what the statute says about who's qualified to sit in each of these positions, how many positions. Statute says at least two, we have three, it could be five, you know, it could be whatever council wants to set out in code. Codification would be useful, I think, here. But also, I do, I do think, at the risk of characterizing something as blowing it up, business as usual doesn't fulfill the potential of Anacortes, and we ought to look for some change in direction from our lodging tax funds. When we wrote the strategic plan way back when, we did have a lot of discussion, first of all, about, about the chamber and about how the chamber doesn't represent all businesses, and the problems associated with that. But we also discussed how a capital project ultimately ought to be saved for, planned for, and then we should spend lodging tax funds, which are a sizable amount, financing a big capital project. And I think that, as I've spoken quite a few times now, that capital project is before us, it's the new event center, we don't have a location, a design, a funding source, or a set of partners. We've got to figure that out. But we do have the potential for funding from the lodging tax, and it's explicitly allowed by statute. So a lot of parameters there to figure out, but, but it starts here with the members of the Lodging Tax Committee, because the city council cannot spend money that is not authorized by the Lodging Tax Committee. We don't have full discretion, we can only spend or turn down the recommendations of the Lodging Tax Committee. So I guess my suggestion here at this point is that we just take a pause on this. I don't imagine that we, we won't reappoint these people, but that we codify, we spend some time thinking about the makeup of the committee and some of the direction and other parameters advertised at the same time, and then revisit this in, in a month or so. I would suggest two weeks, we could, we could talk about the makeup of the committee, the parameters of the committee, and maybe a draft ordinance for codification.
Mayor Miller.
Just a second. That sounds, that sounds great. I just would caution the council because the experience of not making more people on the committee, because that's been a real legitimate challenge. So if you're, if you're codifying it, I would highly suggest not making it four and four or something, something like that. So, okay, Mr. Young.
No, I just, I agree with Mr. Walters on this, but I also thought it would be so important that we be very clear, and I personally wanted to, I guess, as they say, give a shout out to the chamber. You know, the chamber has done a great job of bringing people to our town, they're working incredibly hard. In no way is this discussion about denying the chamber opportunity, and/or really about even participation in some ways. The question really here that's before us is how do we shape where we go from here? And then how do we further define the parameters we want to use to go forward as a city? And I think that that's within our legislative purview. And so that's what I want to be clear about to my chamber friends that are out there, and the new head of the chamber is extraordinary. So I just really wanted to say some of those things about that. But I do agree with Mr. Walters, I do think that it would benefit us to have a little bit more clarity about who can serve and kind of, you know, a little bit about where we want to go from here and how we get there.
Okay, so you know me, I'm an action-oriented person. If you would, so is council going to provide with changes to the LTAC strategic plan? Or are we going to write, or you're going to write some new codification separately to that?
Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, I'd volunteer to write an ordinance that, and then we could discuss it and, you know, make changes on the fly, maybe in two weeks, and, and then proceed after we've adopted something.
Okay. So it looks like, I think council is bringing this back in a couple of weeks. You think you can have some of that? Okay. All right. Well, then we'll bring it back in a couple of weeks, looking for an ordinance to codify that. I don't think that'll hold up any of the LTAC contracts that I'm aware of. And anything else for the good of the order? Okay, I hear you, nothing, we'll adjourn the council meeting. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.